This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers. Good evening, East Hampton. Welcome to regular session of the East Hampton Public School School Committee on October 7th, 2025. We are going to call to order Megan Harvey.
Here.
Sam Hunter.
Here.
Linda Markey.
Here.
Eric Gayet.
Here.
Tim St. John.
Present.
Mayor Derby.
Here.
And Chair Laura Scott, present. Announcements?
I have no correspondence to report.
Okay.
I do have a gift that I think, is this the gift that we acknowledged last meeting?
No.
No, it's a different one. Okay, wonderful. So we have a motion to accept the donation from Sherri LeBlanc, Jennifer Patno, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing these.
Patno.
Patno, and Alexis Alicia.
Do you know that one?
Okay.
She's not a friend, so I don't know.
My apologies if I've mispronounced. For the delicious luncheon, they donated for the entire staff at Mountain View School in early September.
Wonderful. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you so much for that. We're so appreciative, Sherri, Jennifer, Alexis. That's wonderful. We're gonna move to our favorite part of the evening, which is recognizing our two student representatives. Tonight, we are joined by Master Henry Lagana. Yes? Is that how we say it? Excellent. Henry's an eighth grader at Mountain View. Henry's gonna observe tonight, and we're just gonna make little smiles and winks of encouragement. We're so glad you're here. Andy Warmer.
If you have something to say, feel free to.
Yeah, he explicitly declined ahead of the meeting, but if you ever wanna weigh in, that's what you're here for. Also joining us tonight from the East Hampton High School Student Council, Jess Atkins Barber.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Do you have an update you'd care to share with us?
Yes, I have a little thing prepared.
Of course you do.
So I am filling in for Walter Baker, who is the usual EHS student rep. So over the past few weeks, the entire student council has been hard at work preparing and running our pretty much biggest event of the year, the Homecoming Dance. This year, our theme was A Night in Paris. We had about 250 in attendance on the day of, and a huge council presence during our set of time the day before. I would say it went very successfully. And the council executive board also thanks Dr. Bolsh for attending.
Who was spinning the hot tunes at Homecoming?
Mr. Demento.
Mr. Demento. That's right, everybody.
English teacher at EHS. Along with Homecoming, we had a spirit week with different themes for each day. For example, last Wednesday, the theme was to wear pink, and we also decided to move our pep rally to October 31st.
Bold choice.
Yeah. On Halloween, we're gonna have some fun Halloween-themed games.
It's very wild.
Looking towards the future, on the 17th, we will be hosting our first Kids Night Out of the Year, which in summary is parents drop off their kids at the high school at 6:00, they play games in the gym, eat some pizza, and watch a movie until 9:00. These events in the past have been incredibly successful, so we hope the same applies to this year. And then after this, there is the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Officer Shop. This event will be hosted at Worcester Technical High School on the 25th. All student council officers, if they can, will attend along with some other highly motivated student council members. This is a day-long event that consists of different speakers, workshops, and presentations from various people. And then looking more into the future, this is kind of the next big thing that Walter Baker will tell you more about in the next school committee meeting, is EHS's hosting of the Fall Western Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Conference. So now that Homecoming is over, the student council officers are gonna be heavily focused on this. It will take place on November 6th, and will consist of multiple workshops, a keynote speaker, and speeches from Walter, the WMASC Executive Board. And I don't have the exact number of people in attendance, but I estimate it to be anywhere from 250 to 350 people. And we would also like to invite Laura Scott to be a speaker at the event.
I believe for the record, I invited myself at our last guest. Thank you, Jess. I am an alum of the Western Massachusetts Association.
Invitation accepted.
Invitation accepted. That's right.
Yeah, and then lastly, I believe next week, I'll be giving the presentation on student feedback for the AI policy. And my one question about that is, will this be like an agenda item, or will it be during like the public speak time?
So we are discussing the AI policy this evening. Do you have your notes with you, Jess?
I do not.
That's all right.
We can do, I'd rather.
Do you wanna table it for the 21st?
Let's table it and do it on the 21st.
So it'll be an agenda item on the 21st, and we can call you to the podium when we get to that agenda item.
Right, cool.
And people can certainly come like to speak about it if they want to.
Sure.
But yeah.
Sure, sure.
That would be great.
Great. As a stakeholder, though, I think we can invite Jess to speak during the.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, great.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jess, could you tell me the date again for the parents' drop-in? I couldn't get that one.
Yes, that is on the 17th.
October 17?
Yes, October 6 to 9.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We, at this time, are gonna open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here in the room with us tonight, or anyone joining us remotely who would like an opportunity to share their thoughts, we would ask that you raise your virtual hand or step to the podium. Seeing none, we are going to close public comment, move on to our presentations for this evening. Would we like to start with the student showcase?
I would love to. So tonight, we have, East Hampton High School is our first presentation for our school committee. We're very excited to welcome the Drama Club, and we have Ravi here and Jess to talk about the Drama Club. So head on over to the podium. We decided to do this to encourage, you know, to celebrate the great things that are happening in the school, to highlight the great work of the students and faculty in our schools, and really just demonstrating, again, the effort that students are putting in every day.
Excellent.
So thank you very much.
So Ravi and Jess? Okay, great. Thank you for coming.
So, yeah, hello, thank you for having us. So I'm, my name is Ravi Price. I have been, so I am currently the treasurer for Drama Club, the former vice president of technology, and I'm also the current stage manager. I've been with Drama Club for three and a half years now, and we are currently.
Oh, yeah. I'm Jess. I am the current VP of Tech, and it is now my second year being the head of Sound Operations.
So we're currently in rehearsal right now for Almost Maine, which is a comedy by John Cariani. Performances will be from Thursday, November 13th, to Sunday, November 16th, with a matinee performance at 2:00 p.m. on that day.
The play is made up of nine scenes, where the connections between contemporary and regular people living in rural northern Maine are touched by a moment of magical interwoven, of magic interwoven with the northern lights.
And in the spring, we'll be producing the musical Annie, and we are excited to be inviting the middle school students from Mountain View to participate as some of the chorus members in various of the musical, various musical numbers in the show. Those performances are going to occur in early April.
In addition to these fully produced productions, we are planning several trips to see professional theater. The first one is coming up this month. We are hoping to see the suspenseful play Rope at Hartford Stage. This, of course, is as long as you approve our out-of-state field trip request.
Well played, well played.
The Drama Club has also been interested in doing this year is additional fundraisers. So one of the first fundraisers that we have planned is with Cottage Street Businesses. They've reached out to us about partnering with them for themed events where Drama Club members are in costume or playing characters, and the first one occurs on Saturday, October 25th, and the theme is Wicked Stroll. So the whole idea is that we will have various Drama Club members in Halloween-themed costumes advertising Cottage Street Businesses, and they'll help fundraise our program. So we're interested to see how that will occur and transpire.
Yeah, some of our other projects include collaborating with the Class of 2028 on a talent show happening in December. And last year, we were awarded a $5,000 grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to support our production of Little Shop of Horrors. We built the Audrey II puppets from scratch. The production was super fun and a huge success.
Thank you so much for your support and letting us come and share some of our projects with you. We hope to see you at Almost Maine in November.
Can I ask quickly, off the top of your head, how many kids do you think you have in Drama Club?
I would say, I take attendance, I should know this. We like, a little less than 30.
Wow, that's great.
Great.
Incredible.
And then the musical always draws more men out of people.
Amazing. Thank you both. That was incredible. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, so I am who reached out to you for the Cottage Street Association member, and we're really excited about the fact that you're gonna be on the street. All the other businesses have been chatting on the Slack channel to me about it. And so I will touch base with you about that later, and could you repeat what musical you're doing again?
Oh, we are doing Annie.
Very exciting. So, see you in the shop.
Henry, you have a question?
So I saw the Little Shop of Horrors play, and I like loved the Audrey II second thing. That looked really cool.
Really good.
And that was so seconded.
We built that over the course of, so we have weekend set constructions where we would go in for four hours every weekend, and we would work on building the set, and one of the first things we did was make the like frame for Audrey II, like the top jaw and the bottom jaw are two separate pieces that were like connected. And the whole idea was that we built out the frame first, and then gradually over the course of the different set constructions, we would add all these different fabric patterns to it, and we added, we cut like pool noodles to make like the vines, to give it this sort of like monstrous appearance. It was a lot of fun.
I loved how in like every scene, it would like change like shape, like you would like get it out, and then that was just really cool.
Thank you. We're glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah. Where's Audrey II today?
Audrey II today is disassembled, and you have the front jaw is like this, and the back jaw is like this, and they are currently resting against the wall backstage. So who knows, to be used in a play, what, 10 years from now?
Put a new spin on Annie.
Miss Herren, payback.
Excellent. Any other questions? All right, thank you again. That was great. So much. Thank you. Great job. You heard that on my, MBS students may be invited to participate in Annie.
Yeah, do some choral roles.
There you go. All right, we are gonna move on to, not only are we showcasing student activities that we're so thrilled to amplify and lift up, but we are also gonna be inviting a series of community groups. These are generally small groups run by a small group of parents that dedicate enormous amount of time and effort. We're kicking off tonight with Kelly Thaighy-Brown, who is here to present on behalf of CANDO. CANDO is our special education PAC.
Yeah, Parent Advisory Committee.
Yes.
I'm just gonna try and figure out how to put this up.
Yes.
That's many, many people.
Kelly was incredibly well-prepared, sent us slides for this presentation in advance, and it now relies on our ability to make the tech work.
And I don't know honestly how it will work from the podium, but I have it ready to share from this side. So we can also just tag team, like you're looking at yours and.
Yeah, that's really fine. Whatever works.
Okay.
Nice.
I know, amazing.
I came early so that that would work.
Hey, look, it's working.
Thank you.
Good luck charm, Kelly. All right, whenever you're ready.
Yep, I just have to start it from.
Okay.
Let's see. I just wanna make sure that I can see my notes. Yep, I knew that was gonna happen.
If you can, you can just unplug.
It's fine. I know. I just had to do this when I was teaching earlier.
Listen, Kelly is a real professional when it comes to hybrid presentations.
We must make her feel intensely uncomfortable then.
I was just teaching a bunch of undergrads, so nothing can stop that. Sorry for that. Changes. All right, this should work now.
You have a very cool background.
Yeah.
I change it every month to a different Taylor Swift hook.
Topical, timely, you're killing it. Don't get me started on that. Don't get me started on that. Anyway, well, thank you very much for letting me come this evening.
Again, my name is Kelly Brown. I am the Chair of East Hampton CANDO, which is the Caregiver Advisory Network for Disability Opportunities. And I just have a few slides to share. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what CANDO is for those of you that may not know, talk about what we've been doing, what our current plans are, and then also I'm gonna touch a little bit on the barriers that we're kind of facing, because I think that's also important to share. So what is CANDO? I know many of you sitting up here know, but CANDO is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for the East Hampton Public School District. We are a volunteer group, and I would also like to clarify that when I say "we", it's the royal "we" because it is just me right now. But we are a volunteer group of caregivers in the district who have children with disabilities, and we are here to support fellow caregivers as we all kind of go through this process of understanding the special education system in East Hampton, understanding programming, the laws that relate to special education, and just generally being a support as someone who knows what it's like to be going through the school system with a child who has a disability. In addition to supporting families, we also can advise the administrators of schools and also the school committee by providing information and supporting the district in making decisions related to special education, any other related topics to special education. CANDO is a, I'm sorry, the CPAC is a required organization for every district in Massachusetts. So we are very grateful that East Hampton has a Special Parent Advisory Council. And the reason, just as a quick little aside, that we call ourselves CANDO versus Special Parent Advisory Council is we found that parent can be an isolating term sometimes. We have a lot of people that are in our district that are caring for students with disabilities that are not necessarily parents. So we changed it to be more of a caregiver organization, just to make sure that we're using inclusive terminology. And this little bubble to the right in blue, which I will not read to all of you, is Section 3 of Chapter 41B, which is the Massachusetts Special Education Law that describes why CPACs are required. And also feel free to ask questions. Sometimes I get on a roll and I don't stop. Absolutely.
Last year, there was like a neurodiversity month like celebration thing, and a person I know in my grade, he was like, he got to do like the pledge every day, and that was really cool. And then you had like a wall of like celebrities with disabilities. That was great.
Yeah, I think, so CANDO didn't, I can't take credit for last year's celebration of Neurodiversity Month, but this year, we have plans to definitely support the high school's neurodiversity club. I think the middle school is working towards establishing one, having one as well. So we will be doing a lot more of that. So good to know you liked that. And I might tap into students to see what they'd be interested in having in the community as well, so. Thank you. So this is our CANDO mission statement, just so you have a general sense of what our actual mission is. So we want to work for the understanding of, respect for, and support of all children with disabilities in the community in accordance with the requirements of the federal and state special education laws. Personally, as the Chair of CANDO, my mission is to help create a fully inclusive experience throughout the East Hampton School District. So an inclusive experience involves having teachers that are trained and that understand what it is to be engaging with a variety of disabilities on an everyday basis, supporting parent educators, supporting the special, the special teachers, the librarian, the music teacher, art teacher, being mindful of the language that is being used in the school district, and also being aware of certain flyers that get sent home and things that are posted up in classrooms and on hallways. So just kind of being in constant communication with administrators and educators to make sure that we are using inclusive language, because that's an incredibly important part of a child's school experience, to make sure that they feel safe and comfortable while they're learning. So who does CANDO support? Obviously, the East Hampton School District. While a lot of work gets done in the Mountain View School side, primarily because that's where my kids all go, and I should have explained that as well. So I do have three children in the East Hampton Public Schools. They all go to Mountain View School. I have a fourth grader and two second graders. So a lot of work kind of happens there just organically, because that's where I am. We do support middle school families and high school families as well, in addition to out-of-district placements. So families who have students with disabilities that are getting their services out of district, we are also a resource for them as well, because their home district is East Hampton. We can support any caregiver of a student with an IEP, a 504 plan, that's kind of the obvious. But we can also answer questions about the special education process. So if families are wondering if their child might have a disability or might benefit from accommodations or modifications to their school day, we can be kind of a touch point for them to ask questions about what that might look like, who they should go to for evaluations, what the legal process is for all of them. Oh, and Antigone, our special education director, was lovely enough to share with me that currently in the East Hampton School District, we have 113 K through 12 students on 504 plans, and we have 392 pre-K to 12th graders on IEPs. So it's a pretty big population that we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it's about 36% of our overall school population.
Yeah.
Higher than the state average.
All right, so I'm gonna switch gears a little bit into kind of what we've been doing. So the heart of CANDO is really about ongoing support opportunities for families. So this year, we have our entire schedule all set to go for the whole school year. It was very easy to schedule when there was only. It made it very simple. So what we are doing this school year is every other month, we are alternating between an in-person coffee chat at Tandem Bagel. So I was there this morning, and we meet from 9:30 to 11:00, once every other month. And that's just an opportunity for parents to just come and sit and have coffee, have bagels, and just talk about successes, questions, concerns, and just kind of share in a, you know, shared experience. And then on the opposite months, we are having our community conversations, and those are gonna be held virtually. Those meetings will also be an hour and a half. I can't remember the time off the top of my head. I think it's 7:00 to 8:30. I think it's 7:00 to 8:30, but it's on our website, so it's on there. And in those meetings, for the last half an hour, we will be joined by Dr. Bolsh and Antigone Lively, our special editor. So this allows families to get face-to-face with the administrators who are making the decisions about our children, about our students. It can be really challenging to sometimes catch those people day-to-day because they are super busy. Although I will say that both Dr. Bolsh and Antigone are incredible about reaching out to people and following up with people, which is great. But this is a nice way to kind of bring them to us. So we will still have that first hour for, again, community building, connections, and conversations, and then we'll have the last half an hour joined. And then every month, until it's too cold for me to be outside, we will be doing playground meetups at Nonna Tuck Park. And those are on Saturdays. They're roughly the last Saturday morning of every month, and starting, I believe, at our next one. Families won't have to pay to get in, which is nice. And we just hang out at the park, and our kids get to play and meet other kids, potentially who have disabilities, so they can, as they get older, share that experience with other kids, and parents can just kind of hang out in a nice space. So those are our consistently scheduled opportunities for communication and collaboration. So we've had a really strong start this year. It's been really exciting. In August, I was able to attend two of the three kindergarten playdates and pass out a lot of our information and answer a lot of questions. Kindergarten parents are sort of brand-new to the whole experience. So special education is just another thing that they get to learn about, and I was able to talk to quite a few families. And then in September, we had a back-to-school playground kickoff where we had face painting by mask makers. We also had snacks, and we played at the playground, which was really fun. We had our first actual playground meetup. I hosted two information sessions. One was in-person at Mountain View School, and the other one was virtually. And then I also was able to attend the East Hampton High School and the Mountain View School open houses, both the elementary and middle school. So we've had a pretty big presence for the first month of school, which I'm super excited about. And ongoing, more excitement to follow. In October, CANDO will have a trunk at the Trunk or Tree, and the goal of this trunk is going to be sort of a reset spot. So we will have a tent with three sides. We're gonna have a spoonie chair, some beanbag chairs, squishy chairs. We will be passing out fidgets instead of candy, and the theme is Inside Out, so you can come and feel all your feels, because that's okay to do, which I'm really happy about. And then we'll have our second playground meetup at the end of October. In November, we are very excited to be hosting our own listening session with Dr. Bolsh and Antigone. This is actually something that sprang from the brains of some families during one of our coffee chats over the course of last year. So we're gonna be inviting them to come to the middle school on November 5th. We will be starting off with meal, so we'll have some pizza, maybe some salad. Details to follow. And then we will host a hybrid meeting where families can come and just share their successes, their concerns, ask questions in a way that is comfortable and casual. We are hoping that we will be able to provide childcare. I've actually reached out to Bill and some of the high school students that have previously provided childcare for events, and I'm hoping they'll be able to do the same, but we are offering a virtual option as well. We will be hosting in November our first community chat and another playground meetup, again, if it's not too cold. We'll see what happens. So we're really excited. We've got a really great year planned. There's, in the works to have sort of a how-to-organize-yourself event where parents can share things, so we're ready. So we did wanna add just a little bit about some of the barriers that we're facing, because we can't do without other people helping us. So we do have some vacant board seats, board members, a lot. But the goal actually is going to be moving more towards a leadership team versus having strict board roles. We recognize that families, especially families of children with disabilities, are taxed. Time is an incredibly valuable resource, so it is hard to commit to something as structured as being a board member. And for some people, the connotation of being a board member just is scary. We're not scary. I don't think I'm scary. So we're hoping to build our leadership team over the course of this year so we can have other family members that are giving their input on events and helping to support us in that way. Engagement has been a little tricky, so we are having lots of events, but they're not very well-attended. So I'm hoping to actually send out a survey to families in the district and ask, do they know what CANDO is? Have they attended events? And if not, what are the barriers? If they are barriers that we can work together to solve, then that will be a goal for us. But again, I recognize that people are busy, so we're trying to host as many events in as many ways as possible so that we can get the most attendance. And then lastly, funding, which I know is tricky. But we are working towards either establishing CANDO as a nonprofit, which is a long process, and I have to figure out how to do that, or we're hoping that folks may be willing to help us establish like a Friends of CANDO account, because as of right now, we can't technically do any fundraising without one of those options. So it limits what we can purchase, what we can rent, what we can have available to folks. There is some language that I have from the Federation of Children with Special Needs that oversees mass parent education councils that has said we can make requests to local community groups and local school groups, but I know budgets and funding are tight kind of across the board. So we're hoping to really lead into fundraising over the course of the next year. And that's what I have today. So we have our contact information here. Our website is a work in progress, so bear with me as I update that. You can follow us on Parents Square. We also have our website. We're on Facebook and Instagram. So yeah, any questions?
Yes, Sam?
What is the way that, so different school districts kind of do this differently, as you know? Like, is there a way that the school committee can be more supportive of CANDO? Because I think that this is a, like, just for disclosure, I was involved in it until this year. I think this is something that has, that like, you've put a whole lot of like your own work and effort into this, and it's like a huge amount of work that you've been doing. I just wanna like make sure that we're getting, like, this should be something that families are able to access really easily, that we've got teachers and administrators who are also able to kind of refer families to CANDO. And some school committees will have like an appointed school committee liaison to CANDO who like also attends the meetings, and so if that would be helpful at all, I just wanna put it out there that we're happy to partner with you.
But you're volunteer. But you're volunteering.
I'm volunteering.
Just kidding.
Obviously, but, but yeah, like, I mean, whatever, whatever you guys, or you think would be.
Having a liaison would be fantastic. We would love that. I think other ways that the school committee can be supportive is, again, encouraging administrators to be sharing our information. So we are hoping, I did pass out, I think this was last year, I need to update them, but flyers that should be going, be going home with every family who has an IEP or five oh four meeting. So making sure that that is happening. I think that's really kind of the biggest, the biggest component, is just helping us get the word out.
We did, I did, the, the year that my child attended a different school district, their CPAC had like a bookmark and a water bottle sticker that got sent home with the IEP. And it was like, really, people really like stickers, it turns out. Like, I saw those stickers, like, all over the place. And so it's kind of like, if we can get the right, the right kind of outreach to families, that's really gonna catch their attention, and then we'll stick with them. Didn't do it, didn't do it on purpose.
I have purchased a few things in, like, with my own finances that we can pass out to families. The challenge with that is just funding.
It's the funding, yeah, exactly.
It did say that we could ask the school committee to consider looking at the budget and seeing if there's money that can be allocated to Can Do because it is a required organization. So I would just throw that out as well.
I hear the school committees.
About budgets. So, yeah, I mean, that's there too. Did you have questions?
Well, Sam always asks questions, which is like, good. Because I was looking, but what I really was wondering all along was how do parents find out about it? I think, so you said administrators pass out information, and then do you do other types of, how, you know, I guess that's my main thing.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we do have a very active Facebook page. I think it's active. I'm working on being more active on Instagram. But we are also on Parents Square, so families can, they can sign up to get all of our information through Parents Square. So we had in past years been sending out, like, actual paper flyers, but paper costs money, and it's kind of scarce at times. It also just takes out resources, again, from the schools. So we are trying to do as much as we can digitally. For some of our larger events, for instance, the listening session, I do hope to send out, like, an actual paper in backpacks, in folders. Everyone has their yellow folders at Mountain View Schools. So sending home an actual paper with that. And then I've just been trying to be as active as I can on social media and in the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Do you feel like you're getting repeat people that come and not so much diverse of different people showing up?
Yeah, so this year, engagement has been pretty low, but we are just getting into the swing of things, and September is busy, but yes. I think the same families that come are families that come again and again. So it feels like once a family comes and kind of sees what Can Do is all about, they're excited about it, and they want to be part of it. It's just getting more folks interested in it, yeah.
Any other, I have a question. If you were gonna ballpark something like an annual stipend, what amount of money is something that, like, what type, what ballpark do you incorporate?
What do stickers cost?
A sticker budget, please. Can I get back to you on that?
Yep.
I would love to get back to you on that. I'd love to, like, actually look into what would be really beneficial. I think at this point, it would be merchandise to get out to families, but also things like supporting us attending Cultural Chaos and having a booth there. So things like that where we can be in the community a bit more. But I would, I would probably defer if I could get back to you.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Sam?
I have one more thing to say along those lines, too. I, I think as far as, like, I think when the CPACs were kind of originally envisioned, it was a time where technology was really different. And so it was a lot of, like, people going to meetings and getting support in person and, like, physically sharing books and materials and things with each other. And now I think more for groups like this, it's having a presence at things like Cultural Chaos and the open houses and stuff, having swag to give out and being available for kind of like quick questions and being able to, like, point people in the right direction. At least in my experience, that's kind of more of what people are looking for, is like a lighter touch that happens more often. Which is why I think those one-off events are actually really, like, really important. And I'm really glad that you guys are there, you know?
Yeah. I think the other avenue that I would like to go to, and I don't, I don't want to take up too much more time, but another avenue that I would like to go to is just directly supporting administration in the schools. So one of my goals for this year is to develop a disabilities checklist so that when teachers are planning events, when principals are planning events, they can sort of go through this list and say, okay, have I considered visual disabilities? Have I considered the hearing, deaf and hard-of-hearing community? So what do we look for when we're planning events? So coordinating, you know, when PTO does events, can we make this a sensory-friendly event? So my goal is also to kind of shift into that a little bit more, because I think that would also just be beneficial to families in the long run.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One thought that occurred to me is, I don't know how much you've been able to connect with the PTO. Well, first I should say, this is an amazing, like, group and opportunity that we have in East Hampton. I have been to Can Do events. It's been incredibly helpful. Like, this is a one-person show right now, which is more than we can ask of somebody, and we're incredibly lucky that you do this. And I'm really hoping that we get a robust group that this carries on and your work is not, you know, as, just stays with us. So one question I had is, how close of a connection have you had before? Like, could, I don't know if we can just connect people to people, but like with the PTO.
Yeah, I am pretty well-connected with PTO. They actually reached out about Trunk or Treat this year, which is awesome. Yeah, so, and I see them at all the events, and I know most of them just because their kids and my kids are in the same process. So, yeah, I'm definitely connected with the PTO. And then I do plan on connecting again with the advisor of the Neurodiversity Club. So I know her as well, so I'm planning on connecting there.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And Annie, is it useful to make any sort of introductions between you and the EEA, particularly their special education support staff? Maybe like an annual meeting there?
Absolutely.
The other thing that popped into my mind, as a parent who has sent emails inquiring into like, how do I go about setting up a five oh four or an IEP? Maybe this already happens, I just overlooked it, but in that response that comes back about the whole process getting started, I wondered if that's a place where we can put just like, and also there's this group, here's a link to it, or they're another resource for you. That way the school is sending it back in like a five oh four.
That would be great.
Response, and I don't know if that's possible.
Well, Kelly has built all of the infrastructure, so now it's just.
I will say, your website too is really good.
I'm working on it.
It has, it has a lot of good info on it.
So, yeah, the website is eventually going to be a place where families can go and get sort of a, a not-legalese version of how do you request and allow? What is an IEP? What's the difference between IEP and five oh four? Again, I'm working on developing it. Currently, it has a glossary of really important terms and, so. But yeah, I mean, any communication that comes from administration that has our information in it, I will say that Antigone has added our website to her email signature, which is great.
I'm aware I got the idea.
Yeah, yeah, so that's really helpful. And I also think that anywhere that our Parents Square QR code can be linked, I actually, the QR code that I shared tonight is actually a virtual business card, so it actually gives you our website, our email, all of that information, our Parents Square number, all together in one QR code, so.
That's great. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes, at Trunk or, Trunk or Treat, will you pass out stickers with your fidgets?
I can. I have some fidget stickers.
Kelly, I have a bunch of stickers from last October.
Do you?
I have tons of stickers for.
Love it. I do have some fidget stickers, which are like the bumpy textured stickers. Every time I bring them, the parents take them.
Yeah, I have, everyone likes stickers.
That's a great idea, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm gonna add, first of all, I led off by saying we're trying to amplify and lift up these groups, and I said they're often run by a small group of people. This is incredible. People have already alluded to the fact that we ask too much of you. I think, I'm sure there will be a spontaneous round of applause, but we're just so deeply grateful. I'm serious. This is an incredible amount of work. That was a beautiful, thoughtful presentation that you put together in a short period of time. You do all of this for zero dollars, and you're spending your own money to support it. There's nothing more I can support. We're just enormously grateful. Just thank you very much, and. And now we have a list, and you'll follow up with me about a stipend amount, and we'll see, see what we can do in any way to support you.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much, Kelly. Anyone out there watching? Don't leave Kelly out there alone, y'all.
She can do. The Royal League, yes.
Okay. Too many bills. All right, we are gonna move on. Tis due, we're gonna update.
All right, excellent. Okay, so in your packet, you have a couple of things. We have October one enrollment. Is that the first item on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. We are, we have, since I gave you the preliminary numbers in September, we're up thirteen students since the September numbers, so that's good. And actually, this week, we are welcoming another seven students that are fully enrolled. So we've been busy.
Do we have a sense of grade levels for those students?
The biggest increases we saw were in grades four and grade eight. These seven students that are coming in run from first to tenth grade. So we've, the door is open and we're welcoming students. So it's great to see continuous enrollment in the district. I think as a whole, we see declining enrollment across, you know, sort of districts in Western Mass in particular. But it's nice to see us sort of creeping back to pre-pandemic levels and.
Now, new sixth graders?
No, no new high schoolers at this point, and.
I'm just looking at like class sizes and stuff. It looks like I don't want to see it to that precipice for.
We are pretty close in K, to be honest, and grade, in grade six and K are big numbers. But we're keeping a very watchful eye on those numbers. All right, next item on the agenda.
And next was the twenty-six, twenty-seven school committee meeting calendar.
Yes, so I have proposed, you have two versions in front of you, because I don't know.
All different kinds of wear.
You like to see, I know, I like to see what it looks like on a monthly level, and then I need a list. So here's your list, and here's what it looks like on month to month. So we alternate between two, two meetings. Actually, January twenty-sixth, there'll be three meetings in the month, between two and one meetings per month. I've mapped them out for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven for your approval. I did check with Julia to make sure that the, around the budget hearing, so those dates can kind of, they coincide.
We're thinking the twenty-fourth-ish of March.
For budget.
For budget, for public hearing.
You're not picking up the psychic connection from the back of the room, Julia? All right. So we should say, we've not done this before with two years.
Correct.
But we are bumping into issues with trying to schedule things for just the remainder of this school year. We recognize we're about to elect a new board. Historically, we've always had meetings Tuesday nights at six PM, so we just are gonna roll the dice.
Yeah, I think from a scheduling perspective and sort of a community engagement perspective, having the meetings consistent and published well in advance can give people time to plan and prepare. And I think the regular cadence would be nice, that you assume that, okay, on Tuesdays, we have school committee.
This is great.
That does require a vote.
Right, does anyone else have any questions before I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven, adopt it as one calendar for a term, as a term calendar?
Term calendar.
Right. And then I would propose that we would encourage future committees, when we, when whatever committee sits here in January, to build. A practices, right, they should look in October of every year, in that October meeting, set your next to your term calendar. Okay. Any other questions, or I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes, just the January, the one on Friday, that's.
So that's the reorganization, right after you're sworn in, we would all make, it would be very brief.
I just make sure it was.
You'd get sworn in, you sit down, you elect a chair, and the chair can decide to make committee assignments then or to do it in future. But yeah, that's just your really.
I didn't go, because last year, that worked, but.
Right. Isn't it, I think, as long as there's a. And it doesn't, we don't have a time set for that, just the day. Because you just need to empower somebody to be chair. Motion to approve the school committee meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions or discussion before we go? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Standing? Okay, excellent. Check that off the organization list. Thank you so much. And the next item is the superintendent goal proposal. We're gonna, we're gonna do the tech twice tonight, Dr. Bolsh.
I'm feeling lucky.
We're dancing with fire tonight.
Hot work.
Yes. Would it be helpful if I share these? Are you gonna be plugged in and?
Kelly made it look so easy here.
Does it help if we all look at you?
Yes.
Don't look away.
With the same dongle?
There we go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I am here to present my goals to you this evening. I, in the past, and at convocation, I shared my superintendent priorities. So I just wanted to go through those priorities first and sort of describe what the differences between priorities and goal-setting is. So the superintendent priorities that I outlined at the beginning of the year, the first priority was to increase communication, and that looked like implementation of Parents Square, hosting my superintendent listening sessions, and doing those student showcases, which we had this evening. The second priority, which I decided at the beginning of the year was kind of gonna be the focus, was looking at data. And what would be made by looking at data? Well, we're looking at sort of things like chronic absenteeism, we're looking at assessment data, we're looking at accountability data, and doing some action planning with administrators around that. And then the third priority that I spoke about was student transitions. And during that, we talked, I talked a little bit about data. I talked about the Bright program, and I talked about family and student engagement. And that was gonna be done a large part through the listening sessions, gathering feedback, and surveys that we are going to launch. So those were sort of the priorities that I outlined. And what this sort of leads to is, I took those priorities and I said, all right, if this is what, the work that we're gonna be doing as an entire district, and the work we're all gonna be collectively moving towards, how do I leverage my own goals for my evaluations to get there? And what can I create in sort of my own student learning goals and professional practice goals? And this is how you will evaluate me as the superintendent, and to make sure that they align both with those priorities and, again, that there's evidence that I'm going to be collecting towards those. So there is an overlap, and you'll see that when I talk about them. But again, these are really meant for us to, and for me, to be measuring, you know, how I'm doing as your new superintendent over the course of the year. And when you conduct your final evaluation on me, you're gonna be looking at what I identified as my goals and the progress that I've made towards those. So just the timeline of this, I'm on a one-year cycle as the new superintendent, so it starts with a self-assessment. And that's just basically me going through and saying, hmm, what are the priorities that we have for the year? And what am I gonna determine are my strengths, and what do we have to work on as a district? We have to have three meetings that are, you know, pretty public. This is the first one. This is where I propose my goals to you, and I say, this is what I think. And, you know, we can refine those, we can work on those. Or you can say, all right, those seem like a good set of goals for you to follow for the year. And then, again, whatever we decide on as our goal, it's really important that we engage in those conversations, both, you know, in these meetings and that I am. and that I am regularly communicating to you how I'm doing and what data I'm collecting around these goals. Um, I'm required to produce anywhere between three to six goals. I have, I've identified three. Um, I really wanna get really good at three things this year. Um, so I didn't wanna sort of expand it. I think the goals that I chose were, um, they're very, I'll use somebody else's word, robust. Um, and they'll be a good collection and picture of the work that I've been undoing over the course of the year. I'm also required to identify indicators, um, up to, I think it's six, six to eight indicators um, for the evaluation. So again, the cycle starts with the self-assessment and reflection. And then it goes into goal setting. It's where I say to you, here are my goals. And that's how you're gonna be monitoring progress and I'm gonna be reporting out. The planned implementation is sort of everything that happens ongoing. Um, I'm required to produce evidence for my evaluation, um, which I'm happy to do and share. And then mid-cycle is what we call a formative assessment. It's a, it's sort of a dipstick where you say, all right, here's how things are going. Um, and here's some areas that we can all work to improve on. Or as a superintendent, maybe you can work on this before we get to the summative, which happens at the end of the year. And it is my final performance rating from the school committee.
Dr. Paul, can I interrupt you? I'm sensing the queasiness of this group. So to be clear, we are scheduling professional trainings for the committee to perform the evaluative process. It is pretty in-depth and detailed. So everybody here will receive training.
And everybody who's elected.
Correct.
In January.
Yeah. I actually requested a session with M A S D, Liz LaFond, um, to do some of that training. I had the opportunity to go to the charting, I went to the charting, the course training, the full-day training. So I got to see what you all learn about as onboarding super, um, school committee members as the superintendent. So that was a very unique experience for me.
We thought of school committee camp.
Yes, I went to school committee camp.
It's a good term.
So, um, that is sort of the, the five steps I kind of just talked about. And today, we're here to talk about the goals. So again, this is a goal proposal. These are not set in stone. I'm happy to receive any feedback on my goals as well. Uh, the three goals that I created, the first one is centered around looking at data to inform decisions. I think it's a huge part of the work that we have to do. We have to be looking at our data, we have to know it inside out and backwards. Um, we have to be doing gap analysis. What is the gaps in our data? Where are we seeing disproportionality? Because that's when, um, we see inequities appear. So doing that work, doing that work with leadership team, I'm excited to engage in that work. My second goal is around my participation in the new superintendent induction program. And I will say that probably, it looks like the most simple goal, but is the more, most complex goal that I have. And it includes, you know, my entry plan, it includes like the listening sessions, the coding of the data that happens during those listening sessions, the report out, the survey analysis. All of that is gonna kind of go into there because that is going to drive our district strategic plan. And then the third goal is around the successful launch and refinement of Parent Square. I would say the launch is off to a really good start. But it also, we have to create the systems and structures for that. You know, how, how and when do we post? What do posts look like? What do posts look like? And, you know, sort of really getting down to the sort of communication, um, flow chart of Parent Square. So here are the three goals sort of fleshed out for you. Um, and if you, so first you'll see the goal. You'll see the standard which that goal aligns to. So my first goal is around instructional leadership, which is the first rubric area. It is a big part of the work of the superintendent, being an instructional leader. And then you'll see the two, um, one C assessment. And one A is the data-informed decision-making. Those are the indicators that I have identified that align to that standard, to that goal. So goal one is really around looking at data and, um, analysis of data with later, district leadership team. The second goal is, um, standard four, professional culture. And the indicators for that are commitment to high standards and the shared vision. And that will be done through the NISIP, new superintendent induction program work. And the third goal there is around family and community engagement. It's a really big part of the job and refining our engagement, our communication and addressing family concerns are a part of that. So those are the standards and the indicators that I have aligned those goals to. So just taking a look at sort of breaking down what that goal looks like and what are the benchmarks and the evidence that I can produce as I make progress towards that goal. So, um, data-informed decision-making, again, um, looking at our monthly data meetings. And we're working out that process right now. I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit. We're tracking this data with administrators. We created this tracking sheet. And we had our first meeting where we looked at some of this data. We are making, it's sort of like a very iterative process because we looked at office referrals. And we're like, oh, wait, we might need categories of office referrals. So taking a look at the data and the data telling us a story. So, uh, this was our initial sort of data tracking sheet that we created um, and that we're using with administrators. But we anticipate refining that month to month. But my expectation is that every principal is completing this. We're looking at students that are, um, office referrals. We're looking at M-CAS data, we're looking at our STAR assessment data, how are students performing? We're looking at our math data and these. Um, this data that we identified was also selected as part of our Student Opportunity Act data and our School Improvement Plan data. So there is alignment. We didn't, you know, these areas of focus were identified because we saw gaps in the data. So we're tracking and monitoring, we're having these discussions monthly. Um, we had our first monthly session where we really took a look at this. And it was a great opportunity to sort of see where the administrators were in looking at the data and where we can modify this to really meet our needs. All right, our, my professional practice goal is around, again, like I said, the, um, NISIP induction program. So creating that, um, creating my entry plan, doing the listening sessions, creating a report of those findings. I meet with my NISIP coach monthly. This morning, again, I was in Margarow as, at a training, talking about presenting goals to the, the school committee. It's like, all right, got that later. So, um, and then again, presenting the information as a final portfolio at the end of the year, which will be the start of our strategic plan. So that will be produced by the end of the year. Um, I'm really excited to do that work. I think from the listening sessions and our data analysis and all of those things are gonna, you know, come a- as a culmination to our district strategic plan.
Michelle, can you remind me, where are we at in the strategic plan? When does it expire?
Oh, it expired already.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three. So.
Just a little bit.
We are working on it. We are building on the foundation.
This is one of those post-COVID slump things.
We had some things going on in this district.
Just wanted to get it out there for the public, that's it. So, um, anyway.
Was that you and Eli the Eagle?
It was. Look at that.
Good eye, good eye. Okay, we're gonna show the people on the Zoom, can see too.
It's an eagle eye.
Kindergarten.
You know his name?
Yeah, Eli the Eagle.
He married him in kindergarten.
Didn't even know that. He taught us all something.
This is why Henry's here.
Yes.
All right, and the, the final goal that I wanted to highlight was the, the district improvement goal of, uh, the implementation of Parent Square and getting at least seventy-five percent of the families actively connected and engaged using Parent Square. Um, and doing trainings and making sure that we have communication plans and that we have, uh, that we're monitoring usage and metrics and identifying barriers to access and things that we need to do. Um, we, it, it's been fantastic so far, but I do think that we need sort of a blueprint for how, who, what and when to communicate. So we're doing that.
Do we have a sense, like a back-of-the-envelope sense of a percentage of parents that have signed up or have any level of engagement?
Last I checked, I think we're around sixty-four percent of people that have the app on their phone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it.
Had signed into the school so that you can see that they have, right. So they've connected, they put the app on and they've connected it to the school.
Yeah, I think in January, um, Jean Libby will come do a presentation to you all on.
Well, to whomever is here, yeah.
Yes, to all of you. Okay. Okay. Um, and then again, so these are my goals. And what you'll do at the end of the evaluation cycle is you're gonna monitor and assess my progress at the end of the one-year cycle. And you will give me a rating of did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded on those goals. Um, and I will be, um, updating you, um, pretty frequently on my progress towards my goal. What I'm gonna do is, as part of the superintendent report, um, when I'm not presenting to you, I will be doing a piece on where we are on each of those goals and providing evidence along the way, um, as sort of a portfolio of the work. So you're not getting it all at once at the end of the year, but you're getting little snippets and, um, little insight onto the working, uh, and to what is happening during the school year. Um, and again, that is just a piece. Goals are just a piece of the puzzle for the superintendent's evaluation. It'll also be raining me on the four standards. And those four standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. But there is some overlap between the goals that I identified and the evidence that I'm gonna be producing that align to those standards. So, um, if you have any questions about the evaluation cycle as well, I'm, I'm happy to answer those.
Michelle, we would do, perform the summative in July or after July?
It usually happens late summer.
Yeah. Okay. Will you remind me, and so in your first three years, do we do this each of the years and then?
I think year one and year three, right? So you should, uh, superintendent is required to be evaluated every year?
So I, okay, so I ask because, first of all, this is, like, I've seen this form before. We've done this and this is so much clearer of like how to figure out what the goals and the indicators are. So first of all, thank you for us to figure out what the indicators are. I haven't seen that particular level of organization before. Um, which I know is a low bar, but, um, it's great, it's super helpful. Another, I just didn't know how often we're supposed to be doing this. I think we were off for a variety of reasons over, you know, I've been doing this four years.
We declined, we had an interim too that we felt.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so it's just, it's really lovely to see, like, a schedule for like what goals are and how we're gonna keep track of that all together. That feels more like shared goals versus, I don't know, evaluation. It just feels much more like shared goals.
It feels that way to me too. Because I, I mean, I like feedback and I like to know how I'm doing. And if, you know, I'm sending out things, it's nice to just get, you know, a quick little dipstick. Oh, okay, thanks for updating on that.
Mm-hmm. Great. Great. Anybody else have questions? Do we have more to go?
No, I'm, I'm good to go.
Excellent, that was really, that was really great. And it is a lot. Now we do this summative process, so we don't, it used to be you have to look at every category.
Yeah.
And I think with annual evaluations, I like that we're just kind of highlighting enough that people can actually wrap their brains around. Um, because otherwise it just used to be like five, oh, five, 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 five out of, you know. Yeah. And so training people on how to really judge the, not just the score, but the comments and the feedback, I think would make these more useful and less of just a button pushing exercise. You like that? All right, uh, thank you so much.
I do have other questions, I just.
Yeah.
Do we, I realize this is not this year, but do we have an idea of like when the strategic plan might come into play? Like when would that be on our agenda?
So I, hopefully, by the end of this year, we're gonna have, um, a three-to-five-year draft strategic plan.
That sounds amazing. For consideration for the next committee.
Yeah.
Right.
Cool. Okay, that was awesome, sorry.
Yep, no, that's a very valid question. All right. Our Director of Business Services, Julia Sarre-Granks, good evening.
Good evening.
I forgot how to spell str- strati.
Okay, strategic, S-T-R.
I'm gonna work on that over here.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I have an update on the FY twenty-five end-of-year financial report. Uh, the update is that it has not been completed yet. Um, last month, I told you that the deadline was September thirtieth. We have not been able to complete that report because the city has not closed the books for FY twenty-five. So we can't generate the reports that we need in order to complete that report. Uh, we have asked for an extension from DESI. Um, and I will be having a conversation with Jay Sullivan about that, actually on Thursday. Um, I have every reason to believe that they will grant that extension and things will be fine.
If they don't, what's the recourse or what's the punishment?
I've, well, technically speaking, under MGL, if we do not have our end-of-year report submitted by December thirty-first, they can withhold the chapter seventy portion of our local aid payments starting in January. Right, but we, we have every intention of having it completed before that.
Before then.
So this is, are we sitting like in our grace period? Like, we're like between the fifteenth and the thirtieth on your mortgage right now?
Put it in the terms we can understand.
I can understand, right, yeah.
So, uh, while it is not done and we have not met the deadline, I am not concerned about it. And, uh, it will happen and I will, it continue to update you on progress on that.
Great.
Um, so moving into FY twenty-six, um, as has been customary, um, in these reports, I give you a percentage of how much of our, um, current year budget is spent up to the, whenever I create this report. Um, I guess I wanna know from the committee if you think that number is helpful and to continue providing this or if you want me to do something else?
I really like it. I'm not on finance, so.
Yeah, it's tricky because some things are like lump, some upfront. So it can be, it can mislead a little bit. Well, I think we should talk about, before the end of the year, have a meeting to just level, make, I like the encumbrance number, but we might need a little more color for people who don't sit on finance to get a sense of like, and that's something we could discuss. I'm hoping we can just roll out some fresher templates for the next term.
Sure. Uh, so at, at this time and at that time, I, um, because I was prepping this right at the end of quarter one. So in your packet, there is the quarter one report that shows expenditures for July, August, September.
Right.
So you see year-to-date actual, encumbered, and year-to-date total. Um, there is an asterisk on this because.
I don't think that made it in the packet.
It didn't?
I don't see.
No.
I don't see.
You could just shoot it to us anytime this week. I'd love to take a look.
Uh, yep, I can send that out. Interesting. Um, caveat with that, and I think I have the note on there, is that as of when I pulled that data, this September payroll information had not yet been posted to our expenditure account. So we processed payroll in Harper's and then the city auditor's department takes that information from Harper's and has to post it into K V S. And so that September report shows that we spent eighteen percent. But I know that that is not correct because it does not include any September payroll.
Right.
So just a, a caveat for that.
And what percentage of this fiscal year are we even in? Like relative?
But you can't even really use that because of the way it gets spent. So that was kind of what I was gonna say.
It's a circle and a circle and circle.
We could put in like what amount we've spent versus what amount we've expected, we expect to spend by now. Like that could be the comparison. But it's, it's not as simple as like divide by twelve.
Yeah.
Correct. And it is the end of the first fiscal quarter, so if it worked that way, you know, twenty-five percent is what you'd expect. Although, I mean, lots of our annual expenditures, we encumber ahead of time.
Yeah.
Right, um, payroll is one thing that we don't encumber, right? Um, I know when looking through payroll report, reports, I know that we've had three out of twenty-six pay periods at this point. And so I can approximate the percentage that I think, expect to see expended from those payroll accounts. Right, other expenditure accounts, it's gonna be higher because we may have encumbered out of district tuition for the students' full year at this point.
I think what I look for in that number, and this is, this is very close to like what I do all day at work. So it feels like natural to me in a way that maybe it doesn't for other people. But what I look for is like, is that number much higher than expected? So like if this said forty percent, I would be like, hey, like that, that's probably bad. Like, if it was ten percent, I'm not, like, I'm not as concerned because we've got, you know.
It's a data point from which to ask a question.
Exactly, it's, it's not necessarily, like, I'm not expecting it to be, like, we're twenty-five percent through the year, so it should be at twenty-five percent. I wouldn't expect it to be, you know, there.
I'm excited to hear that we're under twenty-five percent at a quarter through the year.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, that's good, that's what it's supposed to be. But like, you know, I'm not, um, what I'm saying is, I, I find it to be helpful. But, um, but it's, it might not be.
I think it's good. I think we might wanna add one more layer to it.
Yeah.
Because what does the public get from that?
That's true, that's a good point, it's not just us.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, work in progress.
All right. Uh.
Thank you for asking, Julia.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Uh, last month's meeting, uh, you asked for some additional information about the summer food program.
Yes, we love to talk about the summer.
So I did compile some number for you, some information for you. Um, so typically speaking, right, at least since this program has been in operation, we have operated at a loss every year. Um, so in summer of twenty-twenty-three, the loss for the program was twenty-one thousand, twenty-five dollars. Um, that was serving one thousand, two hundred and forty meals. In twenty-four, the loss was twenty-one, five, ten. In twenty-four, the loss was twenty-one, five, ten, serving two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven meals. Right, so almost double the meals, but very similar loss because of economies of scale. And then this year, the loss was less, right, seventeen, four, twenty-eight, serving twenty-eight hundred and one meals. One thing that I would like to point out is that in the two prior years, NERE was part of our food service program and we were operating at that site. So the meals that we served in twenty-three and twenty-four included meals served to NERE students. This year, these were just meals served to students at our two buildings coming to our. So it, even though in that number, it looks like we serve fewer meals, I think we actually served more of our students. So just as a reminder, that the food service program is able to absorb the costs of those losses from the summer food program because of what they, the revenues that they're able to bring in during this school year because of the state and federal reimbursements from the National School Lunch Program and Universal Free Meals. So as long as our program continues to be run sort of efficiently and soundly, then we're able to continue to sort of afford those losses to provide that service to the community.
We're going to once and again, remind the public that all of this food spending, this is sequestered spending. You can't spend that money on other stuff. It has to be for direct food service.
Correct. Yes. Next item on my business report is the declaration of surplus equipment. The East Hampton High School is requesting that four television sets that are on old, uh, rolling carts be declared as surplus equipment.
This is a personal attack, Julia, on my entire childhood.
Are we donating it to a museum?
How are they for sale? How are they going, no one is going to be a sub?
That rolling cart isn't going to be. Everybody, do we all give it out of our system? We all respond to the television.
Yes, hi. It's, it's that the rolling cart with the eight millimeter film projector that I remember from our preschool, so.
Savage.
Yes, so these items, um, the, the high school would really appreciate being able to use the additional storage space that would be freed up by declaring these as surplus equipment. They're obviously outdated. They've been replaced by other equipment and the classrooms have other screens and televisions in them, so they don't really need them. And under city guidelines, any item that is valued at under five hundred dollars can be disposed of after you vote. So you will see further on in the agenda and action items, there is a spot for you guys to take a vote on that.
Do we, do we know when, when we surplus it, assuming that we do? Are we able to like, who's going to control, like, they're not just going to go in the list? Is there something that can be done with these or recycled? Like, I don't know.
The city has an electronics recycling bin that items like that can be put in. And then as part of the city's green initiatives, they're recycled.
Great, good to know. Thank you.
Next item on my report is the personnel report for the month of September. Right, August and July are usually our busiest months in terms of hiring. You'll see that the report is much smaller for September. Last month, we talked about the substitute custodian vacancy. That position is still vacant. You'll see that we had a special ed coordinator leave the district, but we have replaced that position by transferring another employee. So that position is not vacant. We do have a vacant special education teacher as of this report at M V S, but we have a new staff person who is onboarding and is starting next week. So that position shows as vacant as of the date of the September report, but that position will be filled.
That's, that's the M V S special education teacher.
Correct, yes. Any questions about the personnel report?
Anyone? Okay, great.
Last item on my report is new co-curriculars. As part of a joint labor management committee over the past couple of years, the E E A and school administration and the union and the school committee has worked on a rubric for establishing stipends for the advisors for co-curricular clubs and activities. So there was a rubric that was created and an M O U was signed between the union and the committee to establish criteria for establishing stipends. So there are two new clubs that have completed the process. In your packets, there should be a new curricular club proposal form as well as the stipend rubric for two new clubs, the We the People Club, that they're proposing a stipend amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for the advisor of that club and the Neuro Diversity Club at E H S with a stipend amount of a thousand dollars. So I'm requesting that the committee discuss these. You'll see again in the agenda that in the action items, there is a proposal to take a vote on the addition of those clubs.
Do you have any information on We the People? I mean, clearly we know that We the People has been flourishing for a number of years. I wonder what has changed or what has prompted this kind of reorganization and the request for us for the club and the stipend? We know?
I don't know, but I, if I were to guess, if I could pull out my crystal ball and look backwards, I'm guessing it probably came out of the group work of that committee, the Joint Labor Management Committee that met to review the rubric. And I think they first started by looking at the clubs that were already listed in the appendix in the contract. And now we're looking at other clubs that are existing but weren't listed in that.
Who from the school side was the member of that J, what's it, J L M C? To me, I agree with.
It all happened before my existence here.
Would it, wait, wasn't it a product of the, of the contract negotiation we just completed last year?
No, so the, the rubric was approved in twenty twenty-two. And the list should have been incorporated in the contract. It wasn't. Yep. But.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I can do some digging.
Yeah, I mean, we'll take it up at action items and see what happens if people have questions. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to school committee discussion. The policy subcommittee update, and we've already, as we said, pushed off that A I policy second reading till next week. But do you have an update from your most recent meeting?
Yes, we had a meeting yesterday. It was, it was good. M A S C had, well, so DESI is requiring that we pass a competency determination policy to replace the M CAS essentially, which used to be the competency determination.
We did that over the summer.
We did the temporary one for just those soft.
That school year.
Yeah, so this will be the permanent one. This will be like our school's policy.
Okay.
So we worked on that. I, I think we're mostly ready to pass it out of committee. We just needed to add a couple more details to it. But we're, it'll, we'll definitely have it by our next meeting, I would say.
Great.
So, but yeah, and we talked about, and the graduation requirements, we also needed to relook at those. I think we're good.
Might as well.
Well, it was one of those things where, you know how sometimes when you look at something and you're like, oh, wow, you know, here's all these other things we could change.
Like a rubric?
Yes, we, yes, we had a moment where we were like, well, we could pull all this other stuff out. And then, and so we're, we're going to have the, the admin team is going to look at it and give us some feedback. But yeah, so we would like to talk about, I mean, we, we didn't discuss this necessarily in the policy meeting, but this was, this is policy related. We would like to, um, at some point, like, look into having N A S C's policy services do a review of our policies.
Can I make a second ask of you that maybe we could pull it out by the end of the year? Kind of calendar year? Just to get us a number of policies that require review and or updating, just a number.
I would say most of them, but yeah.
A number. That way we can set a schedule to say the goal is ten policies a month, whatever it is.
But, but N A S C will do, will.
I just want to have a sense of where we're at, like.
Yeah, no, we're.
Before we pull them in.
You know, it's, um, it, it's, it's challenging in that, I mean, they're all in PDFs. They're all like saved to the SharePoint. You know, it's just, they're not, they're not like indexed, I mean, they're, they're indexed, but they're not like, um, what's it called? Not rich text, that, um, that thing where you can search in the PDF.
You're asking me that question?
Yeah, sorry. What I'm saying is that it's, um, there's a lot of work to be done. And I think it would be the, the rate that N A S C charges is very reasonable in my opinion.
We've been hammering through them and we are still.
Yeah.
Miles, miles, miles.
If I didn't have a day job, maybe this could be my whole life. I would probably, I would enjoy it, but I also wouldn't have any money and then I wouldn't be able to live.
You should fill out a rubric to get stipends.
So I think, I would, I, I think it would probably be wise to engage the professionals on this and we can, um, we'll get.
Will you get me a number?
I'll get you all sorts. I'll get you anything you want.
I just, can you get me a number by the October twenty-one meeting?
Of course.
Thank you. Finance? Wait, do you have another meeting scheduled? Sorry.
Uh, not as of yet, but I will.
Great. Finance?
Okay, we did meet and a few things that I just want to make sure the public and the committee, um, large is aware of. One is which, of which is that we, um, as always happens each year, there's unanticipated expenses. So we have no firm information about this. The minutes are in your packet. But we have meetings set up for, do we say, uh, November and December? So we have those scheduled already, November tenth and December eighth. Those are Mondays at three thirty here. And I will make every effort to make them hybrid to talk about those unanticipated expenses among other things. So that's what's going on for this fiscal year. And then we talked a lot about our preparation for the upcoming fiscal year, knowing that we have like everywhere else in the country, you know, a tough situation ahead of us. And so the committee is trying to work really hard to, you know, as soon as November comes around, the election happens and we know who our mayor will be, uh, like, let's start working closely with department heads and the mayor, you know, at that point. Yeah, so just taking a really proactive approach to building next year's proposed budget. I also wanted to know that we talked a lot in committee about that summer meal program and unanimously agreed that a loss of like twenty thousand dollars or seventeen thousand dollars was an excellent price to pay for the number of kids who were served food over the summer. So we thank all the people who were involved in getting that program set up and functioning and thank you again. Other things that are on the horizon is just trying to get a more regular meeting schedule as we prepare for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget, including things like regular, maybe two times a year meetings with the city council, finance. So those are things to look forward to as we move forward. But again, when that November election happens, there'll be two November and December meeting. And so it'll be really interesting. We'll just kind of, you know, it's hard to predict what we'll talk about in November, but there'll be potentially new members, like, we'll just, we'll just see. But planning is underway to make sure that fiscal year twenty-seven.
Right.
Budgets will.
Because the way this is going to be structured, this power handoff is a bit unique. So the mayor will be sworn in immediately following the election. So it's our goal, but the school, the new school committee won't be neither will the city council until January. So what I think we had discussed was try to onboard the mayor with this school committee, try to get some of that background work, encourage a collaborative relationship, encourage a mayor who is going to vote on finance, a mayor who is going to weigh in on the budget process so that the product that we deliver at the end of our budget session is something that the mayor is already invested in and.
Surprise to no one.
That would be wonderful.
No surprises.
Goals, goals, my goals.
So it's an interesting time to be kind of having two upcoming transitions that happen at two different times. But it is actually kind of nice that there'll be the new mayor and the new school committee that gets seated will be on, not the same day.
We're trying to set everybody up for success as much as we can in our last two.
So yeah, so stay tuned. This is the time of year when, you know, we encourage folks to come to these meetings and let us know what's on their mind about the budget. There's a lot of work that happens. We really just get a chance to talk about it in these meetings. The work is happening with our fantastic administrators, business director, Director of Business Services. So just, yeah, it's really, please come to public speak and tell us what you're thinking about. That's what I got for you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
C E S update, Sam, dare I ask?
I'm trying to remember, when was our last meeting? Was it before the last C E S meeting? We had our reorg meeting at C E S in September. Oh, I've already told you about it. I just haven't told the committee about it.
So. That's not a violation of open meeting watching. People doesn't make the quorum.
No. So we had our reorganization meeting, which happens every year. And again, the Collaborative for Educational Services, which is our education collaborative. And we work with, we've, we have a board made up of all the other member districts, which there are thirty-six, I believe. So it was a large board. We had our reorg meeting, choosing a chair, same chair as we had before. And they are moving, we are moving ahead with searching, using a search firm to look for a new director of.
They call it, I was going to say not a C E O.
I wanted to say C E O, and C E O is wrong, director of the organization. So we've engaged a search fir- firm. I don't remember their name, but they're actually based in Texas, which was interesting. They, they did a really good presentation. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how this goes. Thanks, Laura, for that photo of confidence.
I have family in Texas and I just hope it wasn't any of them.
So, yeah, it was, um, so that's, it's all been reorganized. We've got the, there is a, a search committee that is made up of members of the board as well as members of the staff and the community at C E S. I may or may not, I was just asked if I would participate in it because they needed more Hampshire County representation. So I may be participating in that. I haven't quite gotten the final word on that yet, but I'll let you know.
Dated press. Thank you. Um, I'm going to skip and then come back to the fiscal crisis sign-on letter last. We're going to skip out to the wellness committee appointee. Who wants to give us the T L D R of what this is and what they'll do?
I will.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
We are required to have a district wellness committee.
We are really showing our butt.
We really, yeah. Look, it's been a difficult few years, okay?
I'm excited. I'm excited to participate in this work. I actually was the chair of the district wellness committee in my previous district. So I'm excited to lead this work in East Hampton as well. And we have the opportunity this year to sign on for some coaching for the wellness committee. So we applied for a program and through the John Stalker Institute to get some coaching. They're going to take a look at our policy. They're going to make sure that it meets federal, national, state level regulations. And they're going to help us craft some goals for the district wellness committee. We've asked Ken LaPage, Amanda Judd, so far has signed on to be part of the district wellness.
Remind me who Ken LaPage is. I know the name.
He is our Chartwell's.
That's, that's right.
Director. So he is joining us. We have Amanda Judd, who is our head nurse. So we're going to have good representation. We hope to have students on and we hope to have additional members of M V S and E H S staff as part of the wellness team and really taking a look at our policies within, our policy within the wellness committee. And parts of that includes things like what we're serving during lunch, fundraising, recess, what we're serving at lunch.
Curriculum, health curriculum.
There is, you know, sort of the national P E standards are in there as well. And we're, we're, we'll be looking at, you know, sort of the requirements for credits for P E, what are our beliefs around physical education in the classroom and health and wellness programming. So those are all parts of both the policy and the practices. So we're going to be revamping our district wellness policy, which is under the purview of the school committee. So we're going to be working on that and refining that to present to you.
To align with our strategic plan?
To align with parts of our strategic plan. And we are required at a minimum to have quarterly meetings and a report out at the end of the year to the school committee. So we need a representative from the school committee.
We'll need somebody, uh, this, we're going to nominate someone tonight with the understanding that that will expire in January and we will then look at the, the new committee will look at the fresh batch. Do we expect that that wellness committee will be meeting between now and the end of the year? Probably once.
October twenty, uh, October is the first meeting, October twenty-sixth, maybe?
That's.
No, okay, it's not the twenty-sixth.
Do we have any volunteers?
Thank you so much. The idea of putting me out.
I was going to say, putting me or Laura on a wellness committee would.
I bring the kudos and the twos and we're, we talk about how much I hate gym class. You don't want me weighing in on that.
I would, I would have done it.
I know, but you can't.
I can't. Because I've been on them before for years, plus that's my.
But you can provide your input to the appointee.
I can help for sure.
Well, I think it's really interesting.
Does that light a fire for you, Pam?
I'm really excited about this because I came from a, a time and place with, P E was an everyday thing. There was a President Kennedy had a huge push to make things and it was a part of our everyday lives.
The presidential thing, right?
Yes, it was. And it was, it was something that we took for granted in school, that we, that we would have a lot of that. We would have a lot of wellness education and I think that this is really important.
I do too.
I, I mean.
Maybe it was a different focus than we had in nineteen sixty-three, but I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
Or maybe with some of it. I mean, keep some of the good and, you know, you keep the good and you move forward and you deal with what you have now. So I think it's a really exciting thing. We have a lot more obviously issues to deal with now, I will be honest, than we, than we did before. So, you know, I, I'm really pleased that what happened is.
October twenty. You and Eric want to duke it out? Are you also interested?
I am willing to let Eric have it, but I was going to volunteer, yeah. I'm extremely involved, but you go for it, Eric.
Let's talk, let's talk it out.
No, 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 I'm not volunteering. I'm not volunteering. I am nominating Eric.
Oh, well, that's useful too. We need you a lot on finance, right? Oh, well, that's useful too. We need you a lot on finance, Ray. All right. So we're entertaining a motion to nominate Eric Ayette to be our representative for the remainder of this term to the wellness committee.
So moved.
Thank you so much. Can I get, thank you, Sam. Yes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Welcome. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Sentence. 2-8. Ah, Eric. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Good for you guys. Also, Cheetos.
Everything in moderation. Everything in moderation. We don't, there's no banned foods.
Even moderation.
Okay, I'm going to try to summarize this next item because I think it is important, but it's also kind of detailed and, okay. So we received a letter. This is in, this is regarding the fiscal crisis sign on letter. I received a letter from Sarah Woodard, who is the Senate District Coordinator for Hampshire and Hampden districts. She was making us aware of this advocacy movement. That she sent us a link for a fiscal crisis sign on letter. It reads, "The public school fiscal crisis is impacting communities across Massachusetts. Today, we ask you to sign on to the letter below to publicly urge the governor and the legislature to take decisive action to address it in the FY '27 state budget." And there is also an email where we can get more information. Essentially, I'm going to just read her bullet points. Specifically, we urge you to focus on advancing the following priorities that would provide relief to the school districts we collectively represent. One, strengthening the special education circuit breaker program. Two, fixing the Chapter 70 inflation cap. Three, fully reimbursing regional and non-regional school districts for student transportation costs. That'd be great. Four, significantly increasing rural school aid. Five, further mitigating the financial impact of charter schools on traditional public schools. And six, making targeted investments in the staffing and programs needed to best support student mental health. And she closes by saying, "While addressing these issues will not solve the entirety of the fiscal challenges in public education, doing so would bring urgently needed resources to Massachusetts districts." So I had told her, I invited her to come and speak. She really was like, I mean, it speaks for itself. Fair. And I told her I would bring it to all of you to have a discussion. I'm not convinced it's appropriate for a vote or not. I'm interested to hear what all of you have to say. And it was in the packet, so hopefully everybody got a chance to just kind of.
Can you reread the last bullet point, please?
The last bullet point, number six, making targeted investments in the staffing and programs needed to best support student mental health. So I think that's probably like an increased focus on SEL, things like the Brey program. I would assume things like. Anybody have thoughts, comments, questions? What do you think, Henry?
I, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Who's, who we got?
Were you about to say something?
No.
So I understood this to be something that we could sign on to individually.
Correct.
So I did. So I'm glad that I wasn't wrong about that. I guess my question is like, is it, would it also be helpful for us to like vote to send this letter from our committee?
Kind of my point. When somebody approaches me with something like this, I mean, sure, I can sign it. That does something, not much. We are in a position of some authority where we can share this message. So like, is this something that we could talk to other school committees? Could we talk to the teachers union?
They're also, I mean, I got another email from her recently saying that they're specifically looking for city council and like municipalities as well as like where members.
As a body?
No, just like members, like to sign individually. So one thing I thought we could do is maybe.
Oh, it does. Yeah. So when you fill us out, it does, you can select, right? Are you a school committee member, a chair, super?
One thing I thought about was we could, we could make a statement in agreement with this essentially.
Me, if I'm, I'm going to interrupt, but after your point.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like I'm wondering if we could, if, if we were, because I, I think, I think as far as discussion goes, I think we're pretty much all in agreement with this ask. I don't know how effective or kind of if this is the right way to do it. But we could potentially send something back saying that all of us are in agreement with it. And also that we are sending it to our city council and we could officially send it to city council and ask them to discuss it.
This is all the stuff, this is why this is discussion. Like what do we want to do with this? Now we have the ball. Go ahead, Tim.
I have two questions. This, we're not sure if we're voting on this.
I'm not sure if there will be something to vote on. So as Sam mentioned, like, everybody can certainly fill this out individually as a school committee member. We could also, for example, vote to say we support this as a body. There isn't a way to register that in this form, but we could send a letter to them.
Is there a need for our support? Is that like?
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah.
Okay, but, okay, I just don't understand how we're supposed to give our support other than just asserting that we support.
To be very fair, I don't either, which is why I invited her to come here and kind of address that more specifically.
The other question that I have, well, the other request that I would have is, is more specificity. And especially just on the one bullet point that I asked you to repeat, just more specificity to what they're intending. To like what kind of programs they're intending to move funds towards or to.
I have a similar reaction to you.
And there's probably, I didn't, the other bullet points kind of went by. That was the one that popped up as a flag. There's probably other things. But anyways, those are the two things for me. Like I don't understand exactly what we're supposed to do to show our support. And I also don't, I want to know more about the programs because it seems a little.
Vague.
Vague.
Yeah, strengthening the special education circuit breaker program, fixing the Chapter 70 inflation cap, fully reimbursing, well, that one's clear. Significantly increasing rural school aid, further mitigating the financial impact of charter schools on traditional public schools. I mean, I don't know how you, I don't know. Anybody else have questions? Do you have a motion you want to try to keep forward?
I think you have a question.
Yeah.
So I'm just for consistency's sake, because we've had a number of things that have been brought before our committee that like are resolution territory. And I just wanted to at least put forward like the, the topic of conversation. Like is this in resolution territory? Is this a resolution that has an action that goes with it that makes? I just wanted to like bring up, there's times that we have said, you know, we, we just don't, it's not within our purview to make resolutions. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, that's a subjective opinion. That's my opinion.
But that's how we sort of operated in the past two years, the term that we are in. We sort of have to climb to just make general statements.
I think.
Yeah.
My, my.
Fill that out there.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think it's important to keep that in mind. I think that like this is very, very specifically a letter being written to the governor and members of the legislature.
Sponsored by the MTA.
Sponsored by the MTA.
And if you sign it, your name will be included in that letter.
Yeah. And it's asking, the asks that it, it's asking to focus on advancing the following priorities. So it's not making a specific ask. It is making an ask though, which I think is a little bit different from some of the resolutions that we've talked about where it's mainly like, this is what we believe as a body. This is more like, this is, to me anyway, it is proposing action. It's very vague action and I am also like skeptical.
It's not even action. I guess it's prioritization.
It's prioritization. And I think like, which is why I felt okay signing it on my own because I was like, yeah, sure, I would love to go.
Of course.
Is this even, is this the, the place for this? If this is an individualized?
That's the question.
That's what we're trying to, yeah.
That's the, I just wanted to open a conversation to see how people felt about it and see, give them an opportunity to dissect it.
I like Sam read it and said, yes, and signed it, but I don't know what that does. I mean, like, like you were all saying, fixing the Chapter 70 inflation cap is beyond my pay grade as far as how you approach that. But if the idea is to bring these as priorities to the legislative body and start having discussions and making change. If this is the starting process, I guess.
Sure, through, for, for the most part, right?
Yeah.
But if, I mean, if there's things on there that are, you know, for the most part, yeah, it's great. And then there are parts that aren't or not yet understood to be great for, by me. So that, but again, the question for me is, does this, where else would this be communicated? Who else is asked to sign this? Is this a presentation that's asked of the school committee?
So they send these emails out to school committees and they ask school committees to act, often ask school committees to act as a conduit to their city council or their city government to get their support as well. That was the, that was the beginning and the end of the ask. Yeah.
Yeah, from my understanding, this is just giving weight to say, we want these priorities. They're asking us to say, you know, we want to prioritize education because we're in a fiscal, potential fiscal crisis. And that these are the priorities. So it would be us simply saying, we see, you know, we see this as a priority. You know, we have this big pot of money out here, Massachusetts. Hello, governor. We want education. We want to strengthen these things. We want to look at this. We want to look, that's how I see it. Where this would go from here would be, I think it would either be that we voted. I think the only way, way that we would have weight as a committee would be to pretty much, you know, support it completely. Or else individually.
That isn't a field opportunity. That isn't, that isn't, that isn't available to us.
Well, no, it would be each one of us and then going forward and saying, you know, something like, we've all done this or, or, or whatever. I mean, that would be the, the only way that we could do that. And then that just is giving more, more weight to them. They're just asking to have more bodies behind them. Yeah.
Tim and then Megan?
I think the ask is, what I'm gathering, the ask is if we, if the school committee, I think we might even have a motion to, if the school committee chooses to. But I mean, that's obviously going to happen if the school committee chooses to act as a conduit and to pass this on to the rest of the city government. Like that seems to be the, the ask as far as this is concerned. And I'm not sure what the motion would be.
authorize me to just forward this to the city council and there.
Yeah. Right. And so that doesn't, that's separate from whether or not we support it, whether or not we want to sign it. The, the ask is whether or not we want to pass it.
Implicit support. Like if you're, if you're authorizing me to send this along to the city council, it would be like, we having a higher level of expertise in public education would be required. That would be, I would assume. I'm going to be honest. I have an issue with this because it doesn't list the universal lunch programs. And if you're going to start adding funding to these, which are six important bullet points, but I'll tell you, one of the first things that's going to get cut is this universal free lunch. One of these other things.
What was the point you just made prior to, to that you said?
That.
That it's implicit support.
Right. If you were voting to tell, to direct me to forward this to the city council, the city council is going to view that as the school committee supports this and encourages you to do the same. Right?
The city council is going to see it that way? Sure. Well, I guess. So the, the thing is, is that if individual signatures are required or they're asking for individual signatures and individual support, then I, if it's, it's not reasonable to have implicit support by us passing it on. If the job is to pass it on, that's a different thing than stating support for the complete document.
It's up to y'all. I just didn't want to make the call myself. Megan?
Yeah, so a couple of points. First of all, as I was like getting into this discussion of like, is this in resolution territory? I want to be clear that as someone who's been like involved in the finance budget part of school committee for, you know, approaching four years, these are things that we absolutely need. Like there's nothing incorrect in this letter. We are absolutely in a fiscal crisis. I wholeheartedly will sign on to this as an individual, as a chair of finance, like absolutely. And I just, I just want to give it its due diligence when I make remarks like, I want to make sure this is a, you know, if we sign on to it and send our support and ask city council to also sign on to it, like I think that holds value. I wasn't trying to imply that we don't have, there's no value to that. You know, we can just look back to the lawsuit that we submitted as a school committee. Like there is power in our expertise in looking at this and saying like, these are truly crises. One question I do have, and I don't know if you have background information, is like where the EEA falls in the massteacher.org. That is one piece of information I would love to, if we're going to make like a, a representation from our district as school committee members, I would really love to hear from the EEA.
I mean, this is sponsored by the MTA. So I would assume, do I know if the EEA has voted on this specific thing? No, I didn't get any background information. Tim?
I was just going to say, I mean, I have a tendency to get lost in the weeds sometimes when I, like I start to get down to minutia, like the things we're talking about. So the overarching piece, the overarching, I absolutely find useful and something we should support. Like I said, for me, there's just some, you know, there's wording and those things are, they matter. And if, and if it's, if we're putting our stamp on something that leaves an open door to be anything other than exactly what it's supposed to be, that was, but I get lost in the weeds and it doesn't have to be that, we don't have to be so specific right now.
Let me propose this. We can, I can go ahead and just forward this to the city council and just let them, with no endorsement, just FYI.
Just say, we're passing this on. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, to me, that's the ask, you know?
Which I don't think requires a vote. I can just do that. Yeah.
I would love to take a stronger stance on it than that. And I'm not saying, like, I don't know if you have information also about the timeline.
I literally, I asked. I got nothing else. So which tells me this, this thing is probably not super important to the cause. Yes.
I have information on that. They have a November 7th signature deadline.
Okay, and we have a meeting before that. So like my.
They're trying to reach 500 signers.
My suggestion would be that we do our due diligence and that we reach out to the EEA and have an opportunity for folks to bring us information about their opinions on this. I, I think it's really important that we do show solidarity with the MTA, with EEA and trying to secure the finances that we need. If we don't feel like we're prepared to agree and sign on to that today and sort of like send it as a letter with our endorsement to city council, I think that makes sense too.
Which again, I want to highlight was not a specific ask.
No, but I'm saying, I think it, I'm, I'm saying I think it should be. Yeah. I think it's important, right? Like our words, I, I totally agree with you. Like it is important that we understand that we are not signing on endorsing something where we don't fully understand what they mean. You know, I just, these are definitely issues. Like we are in the midst of this as a problem. So.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to say, that if we understand this, I think we need to be doing this as a group, you know? I understand we sign individually. I understand that. But we need to say, you know, this number of us signed or however we want to do it because that's where the power is going to be, you know? One person over here is signing it, is going to say, oh, you know, but, so I think I would like to see us discuss this at the next meeting myself. I would like to reach out, have some of our questions answered. If they have a November 7th signing date, we have time to do that. We have time to discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to, what I'm going to do is reach out to the president of the EEA because the person who submitted this to me from the district was not interested in presenting and felt, and just wanted us to sign as individuals. But there is also fields for city councilors. So, okay, we will revive that horse on October 21st.
So no motion, but just please put it up in the next agenda. Is that the request? Is this what I'm getting?
Okay.
And we're, so and we're just going to, you're going to go ahead and pass it on to?
I'm going to FYI it to the city council. And then we'll see on the 21st if people feel like.
Yeah, I mean, if in the interim, the council wants to go, you know, and do whatever they want to do, if they all want to sign off on it, that's.
I, I just want to say, we might be overthinking this.
We might be overthinking this.
I don't know that we need to take it up at the second meeting, but somebody could certainly bring it up.
This group overthinking something.
I think it's important. I think there's power in our words.
The topics they're talking about is important. I don't know that this is a vehicle is going to be super effective. I'm dubious.
I mean, and the same thing can be said for like, should we sue the government?
Well, that's a, that was a bit.
Well, I'm just saying, if, I'm just saying, this kind of stuff matters and we're in the middle of a situation that's really tough. And we can take a stand on it or not. And I think if I'm going to list six priorities for preserving public education, they're probably not going to be those six priorities. We can't do public education without the funding for it.
I agree.
The chair of finance, I think, would say these are priorities.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Sam. I think it's important.
Now, without, I may require you to read that, that last bullet point again, but it sounds like the vagaries. The issue that I have or the issue that, that people I know would have with those things is, is what kind of, there, there's a capacity to dictate moral structure and there's a capacity to dictate things that are not, that are not in line with everybody's life in the way that it works for everybody on that. We're not in line with everybody's life, with everybody's thinking, with everybody's religion, with everybody's way of existing. There are things and those things can be put in if, if that language is vague enough. Those things can be put in if the, if that language is vague enough, and so we can have, we can be endorsing dictated moralities. Is, is I guess the easiest way to say that. Um, but, and if that, I mean, that's what we're here for, I thought, is partly to keep an eye on what the community is endorsing and looking at and supporting.
Sure, anybody else have thoughts on this? Um, yes, go ahead.
Well, I would say it it can't hurt to, you know, send it to the city council, and it can't, I, this did not come across my desk. Um, so, and that means my desk is trifecta, um, of the mayor's office and city council and its quarters, so. And I, I didn't see anything come across, so I, I think it would just be helpful, and if, and if they're looking for power in numbers, then obviously getting more eyes on it. And saying, is this something that we think is worthwhile to, to, you know, rise up or lift up, I think is, is definitely a reasonable ask, so.
Yeah, do we need a motion just to let it go and pass it on?
No, I'm just gonna.
Just forward it to the city council.
Thank you.
We good?
Yeah.
They're obviously.
Yes, all right, we're gonna move on to action items.
All right.
I'm gonna be super annoying and do these a little bit out of order. I'm gonna start with the motion to appoint Sam Hunter as delegate to represent East Hampton School Committee at the MASC, MAS joint conference twenty twenty five. So, as always, this is a tricky timed conference, because it, you have to register in advance, but it takes place like a week or two after our elections. So, we're trying to be fiscally responsible, so we've got one attendee from the district. And I think it's gonna be the policy chair, Sam?
Yeah, I'm down.
Anybody, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, because Laura, you know I had expressed interest in attending this.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to know if that was the determination because Sam is the policy chair.
Yes, pretty much.
Yeah, because, you know, I had really thought I was gonna be attending that until we had a budget, you know, situation.
Right, it means an extra hotel room, an extra attendant, and I will say. I just, I don't, I don't, I mean, I have my issues with how they run the conference and how they prioritize things and the money they spend, but nobody's perfect. Um, can I get a motion, or do we want to have, we can always discuss after a motion is on the table?
The thing is, the, I just want to, the delegate in particular, like, what the delegate actually means.
This isn't about, we're not voting to send Sam to the conference, we're voting to empower Sam.
As a delegate, as a delegate representing East Hampton.
A voting delegate.
A voting delegate in the.
Because they do set a whole bunch of priorities moving forward, and those are all voted on.
Um, and some.
Even more laborious than us talking about an online.
I can do, like, and it depends on, I mean, I was talking to other delegates when I was there last year, and like, they, some of the things that. Some school committees are extremely prescriptive about what their delegates can and can't do. Um, so some, some, like, there were resolutions that we were voting on that would have amendments added to them, and because amendments are added, certain school, certain delegates would step out. Because they were like, I'm not allowed to vote on anything that has an amendment added, because my school committee has only empowered me to vote for the, uh, the original. So, like, we can get very, very, very technical about this if you want, or you could, or we don't have to, I don't care either way, but. But I just want to make sure everybody knows what they're agreeing to, which is to let me represent East Hampton at the conference.
Right, and also, there is a slight chance, well, no, I guess it's fine, it's just, we don't know the outcome of the election, so.
Yeah, exactly, no, there's a chance that I don't win my election, in which case, it would be very silly for me to represent East Hampton.
But it's, but they put us in these positions, they have it every November, so I don't know what we're supposed to do.
They have it every November right after the election, so it's, it's tricky.
You would still be.
I would still nominate you, I don't know if you want to go.
Representative from the district, though.
Yeah, but, I don't know, if I lose my school committee election, it's like pretty clear that maybe I shouldn't be representing the district, so.
You're still elected if you're decent. This was meant to be the thirty second motion, you're killing me.
I think the motion to appoint Sam Hunter as a delegate to represent East Hampton School Committee at the MASC joint conference twenty twenty five.
Three for second.
Thank you.
Thank you for standing up.
Thank you, thank you, all those in favor, opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thanks, okay. Next, um, motion to approve the out of state field trip request from East Hampton High School to Hartford, why am I reading these?
I don't know.
Keep going, keep going.
It's going great.
Well, you're gonna do the money first.
You said you wanted to go out of order.
Oh, that's what it was, yes, um, from East Hampton High School to Hartford stage on October twenty third, twenty twenty five, this just is what you had referred to earlier.
Yeah, well played.
A stage production of rope in Hartford, um, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the out of state.
Just say so moved, if you want to say, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, all those in favor, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Uh, the next is a motion to approve the out of state field trip request from East Hampton High School to Greece from April fifteenth to April twenty fifth, twenty twenty seven. Um, I really want my kid to go on this trip, so I'm gonna abstain.
Uh, so moved.
Thank you.
Can we just ask, look, this is a steep cost per student, is there a plan for fundraising, is that?
They fundraise every year, this is the world language, yeah.
Perfect, so it wouldn't be, right, but I just didn't, you know, I just.
It is, and the costs have gone up a lot since like last year, we're talking about, my kids went for about three grand apiece recently, and now they're.
It's expensive, just so you can see what we're talking about, it's, it's a forty seven hundred dollar, uh.
Forty seven, forty nine per student, four thousand seven hundred.
So I was just asking how would we.
We have a motion on the floor, y'all, and it is seven fifty five, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Uh, that was Eric was the second, Sam motioned, Eric seconded, I'm abstaining. Um, here's where I'm gonna skip a little out of order, okay, there's another out of state field trip request further down this list. Uh, motion to approve the out of state field trip request from Mountain View School, grade eight. To New York City on May twenty eighth and twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, who wants to look Henry in the face and say no?
Did you know that already?
I didn't know the date, but I knew that was happening.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, thank you, Tim, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda.
My child will go on the trip?
I do, okay, then we have the votes, okay. Uh, any discussion? Henry, have you been a very good student this year, and you promised to be here and represent East Hampton? Wow, I'm sold, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Make it as an extension, congratulations, you can report back to your classmates.
We've just, we've just.
You're a go for New York.
Tell Jackson I'm staying, tell him I have to work.
May twenty eighth and twenty ninth, this is twenty twenty five, but I'm gonna guess it's twenty twenty six.
It's probably twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, okay, congratulations, Henry, that was totally worth it. Um, so now we've got these two stipend requests, and then we'll circle back to the top, Megan, and just run through the minutes and the payrolls.
Okay.
Uh, the first is a motion to approve the new We the People Club with a stipend amount of twenty five hundred dollars.
Uh, so moved.
Thank you, can I get a second, Tim, thank you for the second, okay, do we, can we pause for a second, does anybody have any questions about this rubric, or this like?
This has been a club, correct, we're just making it official and giving a stipend?
I don't think it's ever.
I don't think it's ever been a club.
It has been.
It has been a club, it's just we're making it official and giving a stipend.
Yes.
Cool.
It was not an official club.
It wasn't.
It was a club, and we're making it official.
So it wasn't official club, but it is.
It wasn't an official club.
But it wasn't a club.
It's a club.
We, we never awarded a stipend for the club, it was a club.
Ah. I see.
With no stipend.
A pro bono club.
A pro bono club, ask some clarification.
Semantics and money.
Well, that makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, how, did you, do you have the motion?
We have a motion and a second, um, this is just the discussion, I was just reading through.
Yep.
So I'm a, okay, my speculation's about what happens, I think it makes sense, anybody have questions, discussion, concerns, yes, Henry?
Well, so, uh, this is just a little off topic, but, uh, clubs, and, uh, they're not really advertised well. Like, I didn't even know that there was a Spanish club until like, they like started like talking about that.
I didn't know it was a Spanish club, at, now.
Yeah, apparently, and then, my sister just told me today that there's like a Dungeons and Dragons club.
That I knew about.
And I didn't know about that, and I kind of want to join, so, so I think that like.
We need a better roster of clubs.
Love that.
Cause like, I have like no idea if there's clubs or not.
Okay. I'm with you, I can DM for you if you get me into that D and D club.
Hen?
We got a good motion on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, congratulations, We the People, for twenty five hundred dollars to turn. Next, uh, motion to approve the new neurodiversity alliance club with a stipend amount of a thousand dollars, and there was also a write up in a rubric. So it looks like they need two advisors, they're doing schoolwide events, and this is for snacks, supplies, materials. So we had a motion from Sam and a second from Eric, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Acted.
Do you want to circle back to the top, did I totally confuse you?
No, I got, I checked things out.
So just, okay, great, so you start with the regular session minutes, cruise through, all right.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the minutes of the nine, nine, twenty twenty five, regular session minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, that was slick, second?
Second.
Thank you, Eric, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated nine, four, twenty twenty five, in the amount of six hundred and fifty two thousand, eight hundred and sixty two dollars and forty six cents.
Second. Can I get a motion, just say so moved.
I thought she said so moved.
So moved.
I'm motioned.
Oh, my God.
Second.
Jesus, you're absolutely right, Linda, I apologize.
She just said.
It's eight P M.
On the floor, all right, let's go.
I'm like, did she just motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric, motion carries.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated nine, four, twenty twenty five, in the amount of two hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars and thirty one cents.
Second. Thank you, Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated nine, eighteen, twenty twenty five, in the amount of six hundred and fifty five thousand, one hundred and eighty four dollars and fifty three cents.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated nine, eighteen, twenty twenty five, in the amount of four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fifty five dollars and forty four cents.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric.
I forgot to say aye, I'm in the aye group, okay. Motion to amend the previously approved accounts payable authorization for payment dated eight, seven, twenty twenty five, in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ninety one dollars and thirty two cents. This is a correction of the date, uh, but we made the motion last time, we said eight, seven, twenty twenty five, and the correct date is eight, twenty one, twenty twenty five.
Right, so we're not correcting the amount, the date, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric.
I have a motion on table to declare for twenty inch picture tube television sets as surplus.
Second. Wow, thank you, Linda, do we have any comments or discussion on the TV?
We already, we already made our remarks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated ten to twenty twenty five, in the amount of six hundred and fifty three thousand, three hundred and ninety seven dollars and fifty four cents.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated ten to twenty twenty five, in the amount of two hundred and twenty four thousand, twenty three dollars and ninety five cents.
Second. Thank you, Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Eric, that's it. All right, folks, our next meeting dates, three more meetings this year with this committee, uh, October twenty first, November eighteenth, and December ninth. Uh, at this point, we are going to be, um, moving into executive session, we will be adjourning the meeting from executive session. Hopefully before the sun comes up, so we will see all of you on October twenty first.
Need to read out that, yeah.
I do, uh, pursuant to mass general law C three zero A S twenty A two, to conduct collective bargaining session with the EEA teachers unit. Can I get a so moved? So moved, second, okay, uh, Tim, we're all calling in.
All right.
Tim, Eric?
I won't be able to go, do I?
This is an MOU?
It is an MOU, it is not finance.
You will, you can come in and then leave.
Okay.
So.
Yes, aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Um, sorry, buddy, I'm gonna skip you on this one, Linda, uh, Sam?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Laura Scott, aye, good night, East Hampton, uh, mics off, everybody?